Hello from the Planning Board. First Zoom meeting. This is new for us. We're going to go over a few things. We have a couple of business things to go over and then this is not going to be a typical meeting for us as we have no applicants here, but we'll take care of some business. Start this meeting by declaring we have a quorum. And I would also like a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes of our last meeting, which I believe was 13th? Or thereabouts.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion?
I'll talk to you in a minute.
I'll make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes of our last meeting approximately March 13.
Second.
Okay. Second. Now, if you all can see, yes, Ken has his hand up. If you want to speak, you must raise your hand. Ken, what can we do for you?
I've got 4:56. Are we actually starting the meeting?
We just took care of a little bit of business. Yes, we are.
I'm just reminding you, that's why I like to sit next to you so you can kick me under the table.
Okay, well, consider yourself kicked.
Thank you.
I declared a quorum and we have, we were just in the middle of taking care of a motion to waive the reading of our last meeting. So I have to ask everybody for a voice vote. So I'm just going to start with the way I see you on the screen. Dennis?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Okay. We will waive the reading of the minutes. There's going to be beeping in and out for a little bit until this gets quieted down, but that's okay. Who am I missing from my screen right now? Well, we're still missing Dennis. So he should be on any minute now.
Dennis is showing on my list of participants.
Sorry?
Dennis is showing on my list of participants.
Dennis is there, Joyce. Dennis, can you hear Joyce?
You're just on.
Dennis, speak up.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
I can hear.
Okay, very good. I can see we have quite a few people from the public. And you should all know that people, the public is muted from this since this is a regular planning board meeting. And while the public is welcome to watch, we do not take comment or questions at a regular planning board meeting. All comments and questions should come at a public hearing. So welcome to Rich, Tony, Jim, and Charlie Crispie. And yeah, that seems to be who we have watching us tonight. Very good. What I want to go over with tonight, since it's been such a time, I'm happy to say that all of you are in good health. It's been a difficult time for everyone. We can take some comfort in knowing that we are all in the same boat and we're all rowing in the same direction. We're going to make it through this and we're going to come out stronger, better than we were before. And we will get through the work we have to do for the town. I hope I'm speaking for the whole board. I appreciate the patience that some of our applicants have shown us, or I should say all of our applicants have shown us. We know it's difficult for them, but right now we are under the auspices of the executive orders from the governor of the state of Maine. And while we may like to or want to do certain things, we have to work under those conditions. Right now, we are under conditions where only 10 people meet in a group. And that pretty much shuts our planning board down from a whole lot of things. You know, while the five, the six or seven of us can certainly entertain and maintain safe distance and we can all wear masks, we can't allow the public in because we'd be more than, we'd go against the governor's wishes of 10 people. So seven of us plus Ken plus a cameraman, we're up to nine and, you know, we can't, we can't have, we can't do that. It's simply illegal. Hopefully, come first, there's a chance that she's going to change that. We'll allow 50 people at a time. We'll see and hope that happens. But as of right now, we are exactly where we are. And would like to do better, but that's where we are. She's in charge, not me. This meeting tonight is going to be instructional. And the first thing I want to do is Zoom protocol. I'm going to ask you all to use the best device you have. Laptops or tablets, if you have a tablet with a stand or put it on books. Make sure that we are looking at you and frankly, not up your nostrils. If you have it using a tablet and you have it too low, we look this way. And well, I think you're all wonderful people, that's probably not the best way to see you. So no, we can take a pass at that. Check the background behind you. Leslie was good enough to move. If there's too much light behind you, we can't see you. Glare from a window or harsh lights. Please avoid walking around with your device. It can cause distortion and be very disoriented to a lot of us. This is all new to, I would say, 50% of us have not ever been in a Zoom meeting. We may have watched it, but that's it. If you're having a problem with your sound, use earbuds if you have them. And when I say use earbuds, if you have earbuds with your computer or laptop or your, any device you're using, you know what they are and that will help you do that. When we're having a Zoom meeting, and by that I mean when we are actually sitting down to do our prescribedness, I will call the meeting to order. I will call a voice roll call and an alternate member will be appointed if necessary. Only planning board, CEO, and the applicants before us will be allowed to speak. All others watching will be muted. When a member, when one of you wants to talk, raise your hand. Sometimes it takes a minute, but you know, it doesn't matter if it covers your, you know, face or whatever, raise your hand. It may take a minute for me to get to you because there is a couple of second delays. I want you to know that. But I will get to you. When we all start talking together, it becomes very difficult and very, the sound is muddled and causes confusions. Very, very importantly, now, I think most of us have seen a Zoom meeting. When we are having our, starting next week when we're having our regular working meeting, I'm going to ask you not to do what Ken just did. Get up and leave out of your chair. You're there. I mean, if there's an absolute reason for you to get up from your chair, personal reason, then yes. But getting in and out of your chair, going over here, going over there, it is just very disconcerting to those of us watching. I'm going to ask you not to eat while we're having a meeting. That is, it just, well, I'm just going to ask you not to eat while we're doing it. I have some iced tea in front of me. And if anybody wants to have a glass of water or something to drink in front of them, that's wonderful, do it. But you know, I'm going to ask you to refrain from, you know, more than that. Now, how we're going to manage these Zoom meetings? We, me and Christina and I are going to make sure that you, yes, Dennis?
Joyce, did you see Yoli came in?
I did not see Yoli came in.
Her name's there, her picture was there, but now it's her name.
No, I see her, but I don't see her picture. Yoli has just been unmuted.
Okay, there we go.
Hi.
There we go.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Yoli, we were just talking about protocol and you've been on Zoom meetings.
Yeah, and I could hear you.
Good, good. So you know the pretty much, you know, wave your hand if you want to speak and all that. Wonderful, thank you. Thank you very much. By the way, because I was just asking people not to eat while we're doing it, if you're chewing gum, that's fine with me.
Okay, thank you.
I don't care. I don't want anybody to get, I mean, come on, we're pretty cool with our meetings. We're going to be very cool with this too. But we'll go forward. As I was saying, Christina and I are going to make sure that any information we need for our forthcoming meetings are going to be in our blue at the office. And it will be up to us to pick those folders up. You know, you don't have to bring the folder home with you, but any information in the folder, take it with you so that when we meet Thursday night, we will be able to have anything we need in front of us. Christina and I are working over the next few days, as Brenda and I did for a couple of hours yesterday, on getting information posted on the screen. So as we used to see it on the wall behind Kenny, now you'll be able to see it on the screen. As we get better at it, there is a way that you can write on it, you know, you can circle things or point out things. So we'll be bringing that up to date for you. So you have that. But also, if you do check in, at the very least, if you can't make the trip to the town hall on Thursday, and Christine has told me 3 o'clock, even though they don't open until 4, she told me 3 o'clock, she would be there, at least call her and ask her what is in the folder that would be pertinent so that you know what you have. That way you'll know what books you might want to have with you. An example would be, say, when, say the subdivision is not on our agenda, there's no reason to bring in your subdivision book or any of that information. You know, if, just trying to make it more convenient for all of you. The agenda will be posted on our website. And web invitation, or what is it, Zoom invitations are put on the town. Just go to actinmaine.org and read through this and you'll see, you know, Board of Selectmen, Warranted Finance, Planning Board, whoever's having a meeting will be listed there. Sightwalks are going to be posted the same way. How we're doing sightwalks is still a bit, pardon the pun, but in the air. Because even for a sidewalk, a sidewalk is a meeting, we can only have 10 people. If the governor does change that, then what we can do changes. But perhaps, Ken, you want to put in two cents about a sidewalk, your idea?
Um, yeah. For the solar farm on H Road, we were kicking around the idea of a drone flyover. And that should be all we'll need on that one. That one's a conditional use anyways. So I think we'd be able to get enough information with the drone flyover and maybe they'll be able to superimpose onto that, or we have the regular paperwork for that. And they were also going to post that on YouTube too. Once they do the drone flyover, then they'll post it. We can grab that link and put it on our page too.
So that will, hopefully, will take care of a big one. We've had the Grammy Rose sightwalk is done. And then we'll move forward with what we have to do. Dan, I see Yoli is muted. Could you please unmute her?
Oh, I muted myself just because I have paper crinkling.
Oh, okay. All right, fine. As long as she is there. We still have much to learn on how to hold a public meeting. And since we don't have a public meeting coming up in the next two or three weeks, we're just going to have to wait until what the governor has to say about numbers of people. There is a way of doing it through Zoom, but it's a lot of technology. We're going to ask Christina, Brenda and I are asking you to have a lot of patience with us as we put the, you know, things up on the screen. So we use that. But in 10 minutes, in a nutshell, that's pretty much what I wanted to bring you all up to date and information I wanted to share with you. Now, do any of you all have questions? Yeah, Tom?
Can you just repeat time and place for the next official meeting?
I can, well, we haven't quite come to that, but the place is a Zoom meeting. And the, so the place is up to you and it's next Thursday.
What's the date of that? I get it. 28th.
The 28th.
Still in, still in May.
Joyce, remember there's a 10 day unless we get it waived from the selectmen, that's what the policy says. For our regular meetings? So is that what you're going back to now, this first and third? Uh, no, we're going back to once a week meetings. Oh, starting next week, you're going to meet every week? Yes. Okay. Yeah, we have quite a bit of work to do. Thank you, Jen. Okay. So as to Tom, that is something that I would like to discuss with all of you. A 5 o'clock meeting might sound okay, but it's very early for a lot of people. It actually gets into, a lot of people don't have time to have their dinners or their suppers, whichever they have. And 7 o'clock might be late. I'm thinking perhaps we start meeting at 6:30. How does that work for you, Yoli?
Yeah, 6:30 would be okay. I can make that work.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You know, we all have to, we really appreciate that because we all have to, you know, move a little differently in the time of Corona, you know. So Ken, does 6:30 work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, other questions, other members? Nope. Okay, so 6:30 next week will be our first actual working meeting. Now, what I'm going to do is ask Ken to take over and fill us in on where we stand. We all know what we had when we left. We had our, we had, the big things we had were the subdivision, the Grammy Rose, the solar installation. We had some best practical locations. We had some conditional use permits. But now, let's see where we are. We have a lot more to do. So Ken, if you would take it over, please.
Yeah, thank you. So the subdivision Mattel Estates on the lake, the preliminary plan heard it should be tonight, tomorrow is when they're dropping that off. So we'll be able to pick back up on that. We've done the sightwalk for that already. And we move forward with that. The solar farm on H Road, that was the drone flyover. Are you guys all comfortable with that as for our sightwalk?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, everybody fine with that?
Well, if things come up, once we review it, if we have questions, can we have the option to go out there?
Yeah, I would think so. We, if we had a small group or something like that, that we didn't trigger a meeting, we could go out and look at that. And once we notify the abutters, if we start getting a lot of comments and concerns that we didn't think about, then we could backtrack if we needed to as well. But a couple of the developers for that are listening tonight. So they didn't want to have the expenditure of the drone and then putting it on YouTube and everything if the board wasn't going to accept it as the sightwalk. But I thought it was the best way to at least move forward with that.
I think the thing to remember is if the governor does not lessen the restrictions on meeting sizes, our sightwalk could be put off again for weeks. Because the minute we hit 50, we have to stop the meeting. So it's not that we can say, you go home. The public has a right to be there and we would have to stop the meeting. So I think, I think the idea of the flyover by the drone is a darn good thing to use. Okay? Tom?
Why not have a condition that the site visit could still go on, or the meeting could still go on, but up to 50 members of the public and including the planning board president, I guess, would, after 50 was reached, the remainder would be on Zoom, on mute.
Because you can only have 50 people at a meeting.
You're in a Zoom meeting.
Not when we go on a sightwalk, we're not. We're all together outside, it's outside.
I thought you were talking about the solar sightwalk specifically.
Right. Solar sightwalk specifically. We're outside. Or it's not a sightwalk. So you, it is very different from what we're used to.
I guess I'm a little confused. We're not going to be out there when the drone is out there.
No.
The public plus the board are looking at a drone film. Where's 50 people come in there?
When they're looking at it at a drone meeting, I don't care how many people are there. Neither does the governor. It's when we're together in one place that makes the difference.
As you're saying that right now you are in the same place essentially, is that what you're saying? We're not.
No, we're all separate. It doesn't matter how many people we are.
Okay.
Okay.
Number one. Number two, the public hearing, is that the point at which you?
We're not talking about a public hearing right now. We're talking about a sightwalk.
Okay, well, I guess I don't understand the thinking that we're at 52 people, you are, the discussion at the board level or whatever would be kiboshed.
Tommy, if we are at the sightwalk in person, feet on the ground.
Oh, okay, well, I didn't know you were considering that.
That is, if I didn't make that clear, if we are there, feet on the ground, that's, it can't happen.
Right. That's why we're considering the drone.
And that's what the drone takes care of.
Yeah, okay. Just seeking some clarity here.
No, that's good. That's what this meeting is all about for everybody. That's exactly what this meeting is all about. So we're all on the same page and we all understand how we're doing things because it's so different. I'm glad we had the conversation. Ken, we'll go back to you.
All right, so it sounds like the drone flyover will work for the sightwalk for the solar farm unless some unforeseen things happen. I'm not telling you the preliminary thing. Acton Fair, the solar project in the Mattel with the two pressing that we keep getting a lot of questions about moving forward with. And like you say, it's a kind of a catch 22. The governor's limiting us to 10 people, but yet on the other hand, she's telling us that the planning decisions still need to be moving forward and we still need to be issuing permits. So this seems like it's the best solution that we have right now.
Right.
Grammy Rose would be the next one in line as far as anxious to keep moving. And those three, really, I don't have in any particular order, that just as far as questioning us when we're moving forward. But I think once we get through tonight's meeting, we'll be able to give some better definitive answers and start making agendas and things like that. The Acton Fair project out there, sounds like the fair's canceled this year. So they're still going to be doing activities, so we want to keep them alive too as well. Those were the four major ones we had there. A few new ones, I have another subdivision out on Buzzell Road on Lakeside for Tim Mahoney. It's just a one lot subdivision. So that one there, I've got some of the paperwork. I just want to sit with you, Joyce, and make sure you think it's complete enough or see if we need to send it out for a plan review. I have also on Buzzell Road was, Mr. Bickford has a wood logging business. He wants to expand that beyond home occupation and get a conditional use for that. Double check with him too, to make sure he still wants to move forward. And the applications have been dropped off a while ago. We have a conditional use request for Goat Hill Farm for place of assembly events up there as well too. No structures being built there. I think the parking's all set there. They're just going to gravel an area or a patio type thing and probably bring tents in or something like that. Plant excavation is looking at putting a building on the area we did the pit for on West Shore Drive. The building would store the loader on site, a dump truck or two, and have a dwelling unit above it or next to it for the watchdog. The second solar project in town, they're okay waiting. They haven't pushed us very hard. So that one there, I'd probably put to the last of things where they're not calling all the time. So that works okay for, on our end. The Buzzell Road subdivision, we did the six lot subdivision there. There was some confusion there with the right of way. He had granted the town the right of way, but the town never accepted. And there was a few board members that didn't want that and felt that kind of came in and they didn't realize that. He's got a revised plan to change that to how the board wanted that originally. So we'll have a revision for that plan. As he went back to the existing right of way, the last lot didn't have enough road frontage, so we bought some from the neighbor too to make sure he's got a conforming lot. I can't remember if that was six or seven lots out there.
Seven lots, I think.
Yeah. Leslie's got her hand up.
Leslie?
Yeah, I have a question on that. There are deeds filed at the.
Registry?
Yes. For deeding that strip to the town. So that would need to be rescinded.
Right, right. So we have to have a modified plan. We have to accept the plan. New deeds would be done. And then for the selectmen and that route there as well too. He thought he was doing a good thing and it really became more complicated than it needed to be, I guess.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that the deeds had been executed, giving it to the inhabitants of Acton.
Yeah, yeah. And of course, that had to go through town meeting as well too, and we've never moved forward on that, so.
No town meeting.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't sound like this year. So I do have a revision for the daycare too, Busy Bee on Milton Mills Road. They were able to obtain a DOT permit for, I think, 25 trips a day or something like that. So in lieu of the speed control radar sign, hopefully the DOT permit will be enough. And I'll get that when we do the documents and get them on the agenda, you guys will be able to see the conditions on that, which would not allow backing out to the road was DOT's standard conditions.
I remember the sightwalk guys, backing out that driveway was, looked pretty hairy. Dennis, you've got your hand up.
Yes. Honey, that would be moved up in priority a little bit.
Yeah, that would be one of the first things on the agenda for next week. We. Yeah, that would be one of the first things on the agenda for next week. We really didn't have anything on the agenda, so we can't really talk in depth tonight and make decisions, but we'll at least have, you guys will know what we've got going out there. And I think, I feel like I'm missing a couple of projects, but that's four, eight, nine, 10, 10, 11, 12 projects.
And I don't see any best practicals there.
Oh, I've got two of those waiting. They were hoping for a decision tonight, but again, we didn't put it on the agenda, so we'll get it for next Thursday.
Yeah.
Two, three, I think I actually had four, but a couple aren't really prepped, ready.
Okay. Dennis, you're back on.
Yeah. Kenny, I only counted up 10. 10 backlogs.
Plus that second solar.
Yeah, I got Martel, solar farm, Grammy Rose, Acton Fair, one lot subdivision on Buzzell Road.
Yep.
Wood processing, barely plants building, another solar plant.
Goat Hill, you missed.
Easement for Buzzell Road and Busy Bee daycare.
Goat Hill.
Goat Hill.
Goat Hill.
Oh, Goat Hill.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're going to be the wedding capital of Maine. Come on, Dennis.
Yeah. I guess just a couple update on the projects we've approved. Both wedding bonds are fully constructed. One's hoping to open in the next few weeks. The other, the Milton Mills one's probably a little further behind. They're both looking really good. The whole Nine Yards Dock, most of you guys have probably seen that building, the building's in. They still have a lot of sidewalk to do out there on the stormwater and stuff like that, but the building's up and looks pretty good.
They're gonna do something.
No problem, go ahead.
They're gonna do something with that landscaping out front with all those rocks and stuff. I wasn't there playing with that, Ken.
Yeah, they've still got a lot of work to do with the DOT entrance and I believe there's a paved apron that needs to come in there, a lot of landscaping. The whole easterly side, they still probably have to cut more trees to get the slopes built there and the stormwater detention ponds and all that still needs to be constructed.
Good night, good Ken.
Yeah. The, most of the stone's just a construction entrance too, which is pretty tough driving in there.
Right.
Driving out would be something.
Yeah.
So maybe four of the best practical locations and what happened with Iron Tails?
They haven't come in yet, which I see it in a lot of communities that as the governor's allowing outside seating, the first place most of these restaurants and bars are doing, throwing a large tent up and putting, you know, 60, 90, 100 people under the tents, which, planning wise, that's an issue, but I think we can ignore it as long as we can while we're going through this. And, you know, the liquor commission is usually looking for a roped off contained area for people drinking and things like that. So we'll try to work with them as much as we can. At least we've only got two of them and one of them has, well, both of them has an outside area.
Right. Right. Right.
That's for projects ahead. We had set in the budget around 25,000 set aside for outside planner to work on our comprehensive plan and really start looking at the zoning ordinances we have. They've been, the zoning ordinance just morphs year after year by whoever's on the board and we do the best we can with it. There's a lot of contradiction in it. There's a lot of things that need to be changed and things like that. So as we roll into next year's budget, that was one thing that was in the budget and it appears to have been cut out officially. We haven't gotten the final say on that. But I looked at what I had for monies left over this year and as the COVID kind of shut us down, I had a surplus of training funds and equipment funds that I don't need to spend. It's going to give us about $5,000 or $6,000 that the selectmen were looking at moving from those lines and putting into outside agencies. And hopefully we'll be able to get a little bit out of the planner on last year's money. At least get them to look at the comp plan and tell us how much work it's going to be to update it and get a good in-depth aspect of our zoning ordinance, never mind the subdivision ordinance and things like that, and set us up so we know where our areas are because the whole zoning ordinance is based on the comprehensive plan. And it's been a while since the comp plan, maybe 10 years since we've worked on it and touched it.
Well, planning board updated two years ago. Everything that was due by the planning board, where if you look at the comp plan and it says review, planning board, review, BOS, review, whatever, we went through it. We did ours, but on the whole, it has not been looked over 2011 maybe. It's been, to the point where, you know, it's flatly been said it's out of date, which does not put us in great standings because it is what we base everything else off of. It does need work, but that's a big project and we need to know what it's going to be, where it's going to go. And there. And since, one second, I see you, Dennis. And now according to MMA, a lot of that falls on the planning board more than ever before. And the state does not have the division that it had before to help out with this. So I think it would be really good if we had a planner to tell us, to guide us anyway, in what we have to do. Dennis, you wanted to add?
Yeah. The finance committee is going to make a recommendation on this tonight. And I was going to have this conversation with the selectmen, which I am going to have, but you write about some reviews that were done about 10 years ago, but there's also quite a bit of information that's in there. There's original information back when the comprehensive plan was first adopted. And it's definitely outdated. And I don't, I don't know if everybody understands the value of the comprehensive plan because that is our legal document on how we're supposed to be operating. And when, one example would be, we're supposed to have had a second story on the school by now. And I don't really think we're ready to do that. There's a lot of things in there that's very, very outdated. And we brought this, like you said, to the selectmen last year and nothing been done on it. So I wish they had left it in, but they didn't, and they didn't. But maybe we can get it worked back in another time.
Okay. I just want to note that it is 5:33 by my computer clock. And since there is a Warren and Finance meeting quickly after this one, I want to go through with everybody and starting with Ken, if there's any, anything he wants to add, any questions you have, anybody. So Ken, how about with you?
Yeah, I guess just to trigger back on the planner or a lot of departments, as we see, we look at the crystal ball and kind of guess where we're going to go with this COVID thing. We're really starting to see a spike such as we had with after 9/11, that people wanted to get out of the city and they all moved up to their camps up here. The spike we're really seeing now is people want to get out of the city and they want five to 10 acres. They want to farm. They want to move back. They're bringing kids up. So after the 9/11 spike, it was kind of a retirement. Older people came in and moved into their camps, but I think we could see a spike and maybe use up all our growth permits we did last year. So I don't foresee this being a downturn for us as far as our office and planning wise. So we could be looking at more subdivisions. We're definitely looking at more constructions and permits and things like that. And obviously they're coming from Massachusetts, Connecticut. We see some from New Jersey, occasionally Pennsylvania, things like that. But anybody that had a camp, they're thinking this is the way to go because they don't have to go to work anymore. As far as commuting, they can teleconference, maybe go once a week or something. So we're really starting to see the shift that people want to live rural again.
Okay. Is that about it for you?
That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Okay, Leslie, yours is the first picture I see on my screen. How about from you?
Yeah, I think I'm pretty clear on how we're proceeding. It's really very helpful that we have the list of things going, that we have in front of us. And I guess I would only ask that Ken keeps us updated. If anything does, you know, anything does come in that we can add to our, you know, that we need to add to our list. And then that way we can get through, get caught up as quickly as we can. Ken?
Just to back up on that, I'm thinking to keep the agendas light, specific topic, you know, the solar farm, that's the main one. And then we'll do a couple of best possible locations or something like that. And we're going to have to figure out the best way to get our material out to people. Some may want to stop by and pick up the stuff. Others just have it emailed or what's going to work. Somebody may want it mailed to them or whatever. But once we figure out this, I think we'll be able to go through it. Public hearings are going to be a little bit different too. Everyone logging in and again, you know, it goes back to the governor pushing us to keep going forward. We just don't want grounds for appeals that we didn't post the solar walk properly or we didn't have one. But with conditional use, that's a may, not a shall. And Grammy Rose, we've done. Martel, we've done. Acton Fair, we've done. So a majority of them, major stuff we've done. The other ones are smaller ones that are coming in and, you know, if we need to, we can look at it, you know, one at a time or something like that if you physically need to have boots on the ground.
Okay. So let's see, Dennis, your picture's next on my screen. Anything more from you?
Yeah. I assume where we, excuse me, aren't going to be working on ordinances law. We're not having workshops for a while.
Yeah, you're correct. If we need one, I'll talk to Jennifer and we'll get it scheduled. But at this time, I think we're going to have enough on our plates, meeting once a week.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And as long as everybody's aware that the ordinance changes that we did put forward, we had a public hearing on, the selectmen decided not to put them on the warrant for annual town meeting. So that's going to be all postponed. So everybody's aware of that.
Right. We did have public hearing and they are going to be postponed, being on the warrant.
The other thing, we still all, well, we've got no choice, I guess, but just so everybody's aware, as far as I know anyway, the smart shop is still shut down. So, and that was a big thing when we were posting our meetings and how we're going to address that now.
Well, I think, didn't, Brenda, if you're listening in, click yourself in. I believe that we have used the Portland paper.
Yeah, we've used the Portland Press Herald.
Christine, are you listening in?
They're talking about another subject right now.
So Ken?
We've used the Portland Press Herald.
This is not your wheelhouse. Sorry?
We have used the Portland Press Herald before, but I don't know, as far as Dennis may have better thoughts on this too, that the Foster's Daily Democrat, even though it's a Rochester Dover, that had gotten into circulation several years ago up here too. And it's just one of those things that the legislation needs to get caught up, that the newspapers are less and less and less available and people read them less. But although you do go online to read them too, but.
I guess, I was just, Joyce, I was just, the legalities of it so nobody can say we didn't do it right, I guess.
Oh, no, no, that's very important. But I mean, right now, everything we have is going to be posted on the door to the Tom Cashin meeting room. Okay, that's where there's going to be paper postings. And they will be on the planning board. We can put them on the planning board website.
Good.
You know, go to the town website, drop down to the planning board and it will be there. We can do the best we can do and I'm sure with, you know, Brenda is absolutely on it when it comes to the newspaper. I had thought of the Foster's paper too because it, I guess because I've seen it in Milton Mills or something like that, you know, seen it often. But we can only do what we can do. And I'm not even sure if you wanted to post it, say in the Portland paper, but you wanted to post it as a, to be seen on a computer. I don't know if that's considered a legal posting or not yet. Legislature isn't up to date on that. So, you know, it's something I could call MMA and find out about as well. I can facilitate a call to MMA. I'll do that.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. Tom, any questions? Comments?
Can you repeat again for us? The plan of you and Brenda having agendas ready on what day and where is the file? Is that the one outside of Jen's office?
No, nothing to do with Jennifer. Okay. Downstairs, planning board, come in the door and just tell them you want the blue file that we get.
Okay. When are you and Brenda proposing to have that ready? The day before?
Well, actually on that Thursday. Okay, agenda will be ready on Tuesday, but the, but what we have will be on Thursday.
Minutes, yes, sir. Okay, I'll be there.
So, and don't forget, they have said 3 o'clock. The office doesn't open until 4, but they said they'd have somebody ready. Say at our next meeting, you're going to come over to my house, okay? On your way to my house, you stop in, you say, give me my folder and Christine or Jennifer, or Christine or Brenda will give it to you and you're good to go.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get through this. We will get through this, you know. And if we have a lot of things, if it makes it easier, we'll try to get things to you other ways as well. I mean, there still is snail mail. So, you know. Ken?
I'm thinking, hoping, and we haven't really talked about this, I'd rather, I'd hope we can get the information out for Wednesday. Wednesday noonish or 3 o'clock on Wednesday. That will give the board another opportunity to come up and maybe somebody wants it in a drop location so they can pick it up after hours or something like that. We can do that too, so the board can get that. And that'll give you at least a night or so to review it.
That sounds wonderful. You know, we, as your board, are all fine with having you work that out with Christina.
Yep.
You just let us know and we'll work with that. So we'll wait for an update on that, everybody, okay?
Yep. Thank you, Ken.
Maybe you covered this at the beginning, but is Gavin going to be able to join Zoom meetings?
Yeah, today was just not something he can do. And what we're going to do is we're just making places like, right now, Jim, why don't you wave at everybody? You know?
Hi, Jim.
He's sitting in my dining room on my laptop and I'm in my office on my PC. So we are finding places where we can, you know, be at the meeting, two people. It's like Tom is at Tom Cashin's house. We're making it work. We're making it work.
So it was just a matter of timing for Gavin?
Well, timing for Gavin, you know, I think we're looking at 6:30 and that may be what it is, you know? It has to work for everyone. I haven't had any conversations with Jennifer. Tonight is a different situation because there is another meeting coming up after ours that, I'm not saying our meetings aren't important because I think ours are the most important, but right now Warren and Finance is taking the front seat in my book. They have got, they're under such a time limit to get their work done. They have got, they're under such a time limit to get their work done. And their meeting is coming up quickly, so this was an anomaly. But, you know, I've had several conversations with Gavin and I think we'll be able to work it out. So, you know, 6:30 looks like it's gonna be what it is. Anything else we can do for you?
Hmm, it was me?
Uh-uh, no. Jim?
Yes, dear.
Any comments, questions?
No, I'm basically up to date on everything and pleased with what's going on. Not the best way to have to hold a meeting, but at this time, it's the only way. And we have to do what we have to do because that's all that there is, so. We'll go with it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Ken?
I had clicked the raised hand button and I thought it would highlight the box or something like that. It doesn't. It raises the hand over on the side there, so that's gonna be hard for you to watch too as well. I wanna just double check with Jennifer too, that next Thursday is not a regular scheduled meeting, but that the selectmen will be good with a seven day notice on that. Worst case scenario is we'll start the first week of June.
Well, I can hear you. Go ahead. Joyce, what's up? Going back and forth. So the board did waive it for the Warren and Finance, since we have to go on the secret ballot and trying to get things done. Unfortunately, I can't legally ask them until next Wednesday. You know what I mean? So that's tough. I mean, it's, you know, the policy says 10 days. I mean, if we post it now, we're at 7. Is there any way you can start with a second and then go from there? I mean, they don't have a meeting, you know, a meeting for me to legally ask them to waive it for this, you know what I mean? Cause they met last night. Had I known last night, I would've put it on last night's agenda.
I mean, if we, well, I didn't think of it that way because I just think it's a resumption of our regular meetings, but.
Well, do you meet the first and third or the second and fourth?
Sorry?
Do you meet the first and third or the second and fourth?
First and third.
All right, so yeah, so next week is not a regular meeting?
No, it would not be a regular scheduled meeting. The only thing, my thought is, we have several people who have been patiently waiting to get back on, to get business going again. And that's why I thought if we could get going, we would get going. That was my thinking. I don't, go ahead, Ken.
And I fully agree to you when you wanna jump in and help and move forward, but that's sometimes when we make mistakes and that could be the mistake if it wasn't posted properly illegally. I'm okay, cause of the timeframe. We start the first Thursday in June and then we do every Thursday. So we'll have plenty of time notify the selectmen. We're not trying to slip something by and get a timeframe and need an emergency meeting or anything. We'll start on the 4th and we'll just meet every Thursday until we get caught up and then we'll go back to the first and third.
Okay. I'm just looking at my calendar. So that would make the first meeting be on the 4th of June, correct?
Correct, yep.
But also that means we may have different word from the governor.
Yes, yep, we'll know the 50 by then.
We'll know the numbers by then. You know, like I said, I would like to jump in, but I absolutely understand, you know, your reasoning behind it. So Jennifer?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so let's go starting on the 4th. We're gonna meet every week.
Okay.
I just wanna ask my board if they would like to put a motion that our meetings will start at 6:30. I need it from a board member. Jim?
I'd like to make a motion that our meetings will start at 6:30 as of June 4th.
Okay. Seth and Leslie?
I'll second that.
Okay, by roll call. Let me go back, pushing, getting your pictures back on my screen. Yoli?
Yep.
Tom?
Yep.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Jim, yes?
Yes.
Everybody, so, okay. The eyes have it. And I've written it down. There we are. Okay, Jennifer, that's what we'd like to do.
Okay, I'll get it scheduled.
Thank you very much, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Or anything? No? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. And people, when we adjourn a meeting, we sign off right away. No chit-chatting, you know, cameras are still on, still recording. So take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
Leslie, thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, 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 okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, everybody on the committee.
Welcome. Good night.
Good night.